You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
So I will call a meeting to order. This is the special meeting of the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission. It is Thursday, March 24th, 2022. I have 7:04 PM. We're holding this as a remote meeting. In accordance with the relevant law, public act, that we're supposed to identify ourselves every time we speak, because some people may be on the telephone and can't necessarily see our faces. So I am Chuck Andrews Chair. It appears like that we do have a quorum of commission members present. And the agenda relates to the introduction and presentation of the draft Branford Affordable Housing Plan. This is a plan that the legislature has mandated that the town have in place, I believe by June 1st. And in connection with that, we have formed a committee and hired a consultant, and we are going to hear from our consultant this evening. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to, first I'll ask if I'm going to turn it over to Harry Smith and Glenn Sholder. Harry, is there any other introductions or anything else we need to do before we turn this over to Glenn?
Just to note a couple of things. Again, my name's Harry Smith. I'm the town planner. I'd like to acknowledge four to select members, Angie Higgins and Raymond Dunbar, who attended tonight. There are also two members of the steering committee that has been busy with our myself and our planning consultant preparing the plan you're going to be hearing about tonight. And that's Stephanie Farbert and Mary Ann Amore. There are several members of the RTM present. I see at least Representatives Erlinger, Ingram, again, Amore. And I don't know if I'm missing someone at this point. That's all I see. So if there's anyone I'm missing, I apologize. And I would ask that folks, we prefer that people make comments or ask questions verbally and not through the chat. I'm a little challenged with handling chats. So I will do my best if someone does post that way. But preferred way to do it is verbally when we get to that point. I'm going to share my screen very briefly and just show the agenda for tonight. This is the agenda of the special meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, all the intro about the Zoom meeting and so forth. So we've set this up for, in terms of breakdown into an introduction, which I'm doing right now, and a presentation, the draft Branford Affordable Housing Plan by our planning consulting Glenn Sholder, be speaking in a minute. Once that is done, we're planning to have a public comment session. And once that is concluded, an opportunity for the commission itself to discuss and comment specifically. Though, you know, the comments welcome at any point about what they've heard tonight and next step. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Glenn Sholder, our planning consultant. He can explain his background a little further and his involvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. My name is Glenn Sholder. I'm a consultant with the firm Paul Planometrics. I've had an opportunity to work with the town in the past on preparation of plans of conservation and development, updates of the zoning regulations, preparation of community facilities and analysis, and a couple of other projects. So I'm excited to have had the chance to work with Branford again on preparation of an affordable housing plan. And as was indicated by others earlier, I have a PowerPoint to share, which will allow me to give an overview of the draft 22 to 27 Affordable Housing Plan. As was indicated earlier, the legislature passed a public act back in 2017, which requires all 169 municipalities in Connecticut to prepare an affordable housing plan by June 1 of this year. Along with that legislation was a requirement that the plan couldn't be older than five years. So low and behold, most communities waited five years from 2017, and here we are now in rush, if you will, to be adopted by June 1 of this year. The statutory requirement is that the plan shall specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality. And that was the charge that the working group took on. So as Harry indicated, an affordable housing steering committee has been evaluating ways to address this charge from the legislature. And we've talked about housing and affordable housing in Branford. We conducted a community survey to get feedback and input from residents. We talked through some different strategic options and prepared a draft plan, which was endorsed by the steering committee and has been forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration and hopefully adoption. The plan itself breaks it, is broken up into four key elements or components, and I'd like to go through these with you. Many people wonder why communities in Connecticut are being asked to prepare affordable housing plans. I think it's important to put the issue of housing affordability into context. This graph here shows the relationship between median housing price and median income from 1968 through to recent times. And the horizontal red line on this graph indicates the rule of thumb that housing should not cost more than 30% of one's income. So as you might see on this graph, back in the late 60s and early 70s, we had a situation that housing, that ratio was below that red line. And housing was readily affordable for people who might want to buy it. Starting in the mid 70s through to the late 90s, ratio fluctuated around the line of 30% of one's income and subprime mortgage crisis, or wasn't a crisis, I guess, at the time. But during the subprime mortgage situation, housing prices rose because more people came into the market. And as you can see, housing continued prices continued to rise and become unaffordable. And then after that decline, it's been increasing. And what that again means is that housing has become more unaffordable to people. This information is from the Federal Reserve. And the only other thing I wanted to pass on is that this data doesn't pick up. The COVID bump, which has occurred since 2020, and in some communities has resulted in an increase in housing prices up to 25%. And it made even housing even less affordable. So that's the reason and rationale for the housing challenges that many people face in Connecticut, in Branford. And important, I think, for context overall. From our analysis of some of the census data, what we discovered is is about 4,700 households in Branford are housing cost burdened. And these are households that are already living in Branford. They're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And that can be challenging for people if they earn more than the average income. And they may choose to spend more than 30% of their income on housing and may be able to afford to do so. But for households that are earning less than median income, every dollar increase in housing costs has the risk of taking money away from other life necessities, food, transportation, medical care, and other types of needs. And so when we look at the households in Branford that are earning less than 80% of area median income, what we found is that about 4,100 households there are housing cost burdened. And that's about two-thirds of that population. So housing cost and housing affordability is a very real issue in Branford today. Branford does have a diverse housing stock, though. There's about 2,500 rental units, which naturally rent at affordable prices. And there may be about 3,000 ownership units, what we call NOA, or Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing, which would presumably sell at affordable prices based on what's shown in the census data. However, this data is from the period 2015 to 2019. That's what the American Community Survey data, the period it covers. And so it's a blended average that goes back about seven years. And it's pre-COVID bump, so it doesn't really reflect the situation today. But the most important takeaway I'd like for you to take away from this slide is that because these prices are not deed restricted as affordable or to stay at affordable prices, these units do not count as affordable housing by the state of Connecticut. The good news is that Branford has about 477 units, which do count according to state standards or state definition as affordable housing. There's 243 units of what's called assisted housing. These are housing units such as the Housing Authority or the Interfaith Housing Group in Connecticut, in Branford, excuse me, which receives state or federal money to subsidize the cost of construction of the unit or favorable mortgage terms to allow them to rent at affordable prices. There are nine units on the most recent state list with our deed restricted units. And there's 73 units where the tenants receive rental assistance. This is where they are, they pay 30% of their income for housing. And the state or federal government makes up the difference between 30% of their income and actually what the unit costs. And Branford gets credit for those tenants choosing to rent in Branford. In addition, there's 152 CHFA and USDA mortgages. And those qualified account to the Affordable Housing Appeals List. Take away from this slide is that that, those 477 units represent about 3.4% of the housing stock in Branford. Because it's less than 10%, Branford is subject to the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, which allows applicants to file land use applications and don't have to strictly comply with land use regulations. Now, these issues aren't new. Branford conducted a housing needs assessment back in 1990. And a number of the issues that the steering committee found were also raised in that report. The 2019 POCD Plan of Conservation and Development identified housing as a priority, both in terms of housing that is affordable and housing for an aging population. As I indicated earlier, we conducted a survey of Branford residents. We had about 946 participants. And the results revealed some interesting results. The 68% of the participants felt that Branford should take concrete actions to address the issues related to housing and housing affordability. And 76% thought that the town could look to see if there's town-owned property that could be used for housing. 89%, a strong result in the survey, people felt that guiding the design of multifamily housing would be an important consideration or aspect in the future. 72% felt that locations in and near the town center could be appropriate for affordable housing. Locations served by public water and sewer, 71%. And redevelopment of business sites could be a possibility, was supported by 67% of participants. So I think the results reflected people are aware of some of the housing issues and are supportive of thoughtful approaches to addressing housing and housing affordability issues in Branford. The overall goal that's espoused in the study is to provide for a variety of housing choices in Branford for persons and families of all incomes, ages, and other characteristics, such as race, ethnicity, disabilities, et cetera. And I think the key element in here is a variety of housing choices as well. In terms of the strategies in the plan, there are some families of strategies. The first one is to organize housing efforts. What is meant by this is that, given the increased state attention to this matter, that Branford is going to have to continue to work on this in coming years. And having a municipal affordable housing advisory committee to advocate for and oversee affordable housing efforts could be very important, as the commission is well aware. You have your own statutory responsibilities and workload, et cetera. And sometimes those don't blend well with the need to study and advocate for housing-related issues. So having a separate group that would have the capacity to do this could be an important consideration. Another thing that we discovered and discussed is that there's a number of housing-related organizations in Branford. But they all work, hesitate to use the word silo because there's a lot of cooperation that goes on. But each have their own developments and responsibilities. And there's not always easy to access information for the public and for potential tenants or occupants and others. Well, the plan recommends formation of a Branford Housing Exchange, which is not a municipal function, but it's an organizational way to get different groups working together and talking to each other to try to facilitate access to housing and housing information. The next strategy is a recommendation to establish a special housing fund. Special housing fund would be a municipal account, which could accept funds either from grants, gifts, bequests, contributions, fees, donations into this fund as a way to support affordable housing efforts. By having this fund, which can collect over time, it can be used in a lot of different ways to promote housing-related programs in Branford. To really, the first step on that journey would be to establish that fund. As was indicated in the survey results, guiding the design of affordable housing was something which was important to residents. A number of communities have addressed this particular situation. And I think Branford could evaluate this approach as well. On the screen is an example of some illustrative design guidelines, which were adopted by the town of Simsbury as part of the incentive housing program some time ago. But this type of visual approach could be very effective and helpful in guiding housing design, et cetera. There's also a special committee that's been established by the legislature to evaluate housing-related issues. This is part of Public Act 21-29, which the question I'm sure it's heard about. And that committee is presumably supposed to be preparing a housing pattern book, which might have some use in the future. So just guidelines that this town might be able to use. The next strategy is to look at ways to guide the location of affordable housing, as was discussed in the survey and the questions. Areas which are in and near the town center, served by public water and sewer, redevelopment business sites, near the train station or transit routes, near shopping, along major roads. These might be areas with more opportunity and more factors which would support higher density housing and affordable housing. And that could be an important strategy as well. The next strategy is to look at increasing assisted housing, continuing to work with Housing Authority and private and other entities. The great assisted housing, there's likely to be competition at the state level for communities looking to increase their affordable housing stock to get funding for assisted housing. But the best part about assisted housing is that the funding that can be available helps meet the deepest affordability needs for people with the lowest incomes. The H30G, the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, is focused on 80% of area median income or 60% of area median income. Sometimes the most profound housing needs are down at 50% or 40% of area median income. And that's very hard to address unless funding is available. So the organizations that do that, such as the Housing Authority, the plan recommends we support those efforts and investigate whether land could be made available for those kinds of units in the future.
Excuse me, Glenn. This is Chuck Andrews Chair. Could you just define what is assisted housing?
Yep. Assisted housing is housing which receives funding from the state or federal government for housing production. So it could be construction financing. It could be a long-term mortgage. It could be a grant. But it's defined in statutes in H30G as housing which receives state and federal funding. And they actually list the sections of the statutes and federal code which apply to that.
Does that include Section 8 vouchers that are given to individuals or is it just projects?
Assisted housing is a development which is fixed on the ground. So it's fixed as to location. In a moment, I'll be getting to tenant rental assistance, which is the issue that you just brought up. So hang in for two slides?
Absolutely.
Yep. So again, this is assisted housing and the Housing Authority. The next category here is deed restricted housing. The plan recommends that the commission consider requiring or incentivizing deed restricted housing as part of new residential development in Branford. If housing gets built but doesn't provide any affordable housing, Branford's falling further and further away from the 10% set aside requirement or the threshold for the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure. So if we're going to try to address the need for affordable housing, providing some requirement or incentive for the provision of affordable housing could be a very effective way to address this. You can see there's only nine units in Branford at the present time that are using this. I know that more are under construction, so that's a positive sign. The plan recommends for the commission to consider requiring or incentivizing additional deed restricted housing in the future. And even find for the towns to see if they could find ways to deed restrict existing units. There are units in town which naturally sell or rent at affordable prices. And if those units were to now have a deed restriction on them, then they would, an existing housing unit would be then counted in the state inventory and allow Branford to get closer to the 10% threshold. And this is the issue that Chairman just brought up. There are two other types of housing that count in the Affordable Housing Appeals List. One is this, what's called tenant rental assistance. This is where a qualifying lower-income household gets a housing voucher. It was known in prior years as Section 8. Now it's also called Housing Choice Vouchers. But the basic premise of the program is that a qualifying household pays 30% of their income towards housing. And the state or federal government makes up the difference to the rent for the unit that they qualify for. Those vouchers are mobile, so people could choose to live in Branford or people could choose to live in other communities depending on what they find in terms of rental apartments and what they may have in terms of eligibility. In addition to that, there are CHFA and USDA mortgages. These are mortgage instruments available to qualifying households. It may involve lower down payments, closing cost assistance, other programs funded by CHFA, for example, to allow people to purchase homes in Branford. So there are ways that communities can promote and encourage these types of activities. And if Branford was able to do so, we can get additional units on the affordable housing count. Those are strategies again in the plan. Branford has mobile home parks in town. According to this Sutter's database, there's approximately 238 existing mobile homes. Their mobile home parks are somewhat unique housing situations. Generally speaking, the land is owned by one party. The site is leased to somebody who owns the unit and places it on the property. There can be health and safety issues in some situations that can and should be monitored. But there are also special issues that come up that affect the community, particularly if there's tax liens or other things on the property, which again can complicate the owner-renter type of situation. So the commission's aware too, the state statutes allow for a resident-owned mobile home park to count towards the H30G list, but not if it's not resident-owned. And that might be something for Branford to consider at some time in the future. The family recommendations 4.9 is about looking through the zoning regulations and looking for ways to perhaps remove impediments or enable other types of housing options. One of the strategies that's being talked about these days is what's called middle housing. You may have heard that phraseology. So that everybody understands what middle housing is. Middle housing is housing that generally falls between detached, single-family homes at one end of the housing spectrum and then larger multifamily developments that might be at the other end of the spectrum. And it doesn't have to be just those two types of housing. There can be other types of housing in the middle, duplexes, triplexes, which Branford has, courtyard apartments, or cottage courts they're called, townhouses, small multifamily buildings, mixed-use buildings, et cetera. And there are a number of ways that these could be situated within neighborhoods and areas of Branford and help meet housing needs. And don't necessarily have to have the affordability restrictions. They could just provide housing diversity and housing options for people. So the plan recommends that that's something that could or should be looked at as well. Section 410 of the report outlines some strategies for preparing for deed restricted housing. At the present time, if a deed restricted development is proposed in Branford, the developer is required to submit a housing affordability plan, which is really an owner's manual as to how the tenants will be qualified, the sale price or rental rate will be approved and authorized. And there can be quite a bit of variability between these plans that it makes administering these over time much more challenging. So the plan recommends that standard documents be prepared for Branford, the regulations be modified to require their use unless the commission or somebody in town approves a modification from that document. And this can include affordability deed restrictions and other types of situations. The plan also recommends the administrator, which is the person who oversees the affordability plan, be approved by the commission. There had been situations in other communities where the administrator was not really qualified. And as a result, units slipped through and then fell off the Affordable Housing Appeals List because the affordability restrictions were lost. The report contains a number of appendices, which are meant to provide helpful information depending on people's interest level or knowledge level. There's a glossary of some key terms, some information about the average values of different types of units in Branford, listing the housing-related organizations in town, some examples of some design guidelines and some additional information to help people understand this issue better. Just to put into context the overall process here for the commission, tonight is the public input meeting and opportunity for public comment. Harry and I have discussed, we will assemble the comments from tonight, come back to the commission at your April 7 meeting with a summary of the comments and possible approaches or ways to incorporate those into the plan. Our goal would be to have the commission endorse or finalize the plan to go to public hearing. We would plan to post the plan by April 14th. And that gives us the 35-day period through to the scheduled or recommended public hearing date for May 19th. And then that would give us roughly two weeks for a possible adoption, either on the 19th or sometime before June 1st. So that's an overview of the plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions or look forward to public comment.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Glenn. I think, Harry, on the agenda, we have public comment and commission discussion and comment. Should we first just see if the commission members have any questions or comments before we open up the public? Should we first just see if the qu- the commission members have any questions or comments before we open up the public or what do you suggest?
I think that's fine, sure.
Sure. Okay. So why don't we first open it up to see if any commission members uh, have any questions? And again, we want to thank the, the steering committee and the local representatives who are, are here tonight and who have been involved in this. I mean, you're all volunteers and and certainly appreciate it. Is anyone, I have a few questions, but um, nothing major that's, well, I'll turn it over to, are there other, are there members of the commission at this time that have questions for Mr. Childer?
Chuck, Fred Russo, I have two questions.
Fire away.
Uh, question number one, uh, well, I want to thank uh, Glenn for the report. Uh, my first question is um. Uh, how many questionnaires were sent out? I know you said there were nine hundred and twenty-something that were returned. But I was just curious, uh, what was the percentage? What kind of a, of a return did we get with, with the uh, number of uh, um. Uh, questions going out?
Because of COVID, this was an online survey, so we did press releases, social media. Um, uh, posters and flyers around town. Uh, there was an email to members of local boards or commissions. I believe the first selectman has an email list who was sent out through that as well. Articles in the local paper. Um, we kept the survey open for about four to five weeks. And as a result, we got, I think it was nine hundred and twenty or nine hundred and forty responses. So it wasn't mailed out to people, so we, we didn't have a return rate in that way.
Right.
Um, but we did everything we could to make people aware of Survey Monkey and. Um, I, I was pretty pleased with the response. I, I think nine hundred and forty-six people is more than we would have gotten at a public meeting. So um, I'm glad that we got that level of response.
Right, fair enough. Uh, my second question is, you had mentioned early on in your report that um. Towns that did not have public water supplies or sewers. Does that make them less likely to uh, be required to put in affordable housing? I mean, Branford has water, gas, and sewers, but the next town over doesn't have that. So the, does that put more pressure on towns that have those uh, services? As opposed to smaller towns that uh, work on septic systems and wells?
The, the same uh, parameters apply to all municipalities in Connecticut. Um, if you're below ten percent affordable housing, then the affordable housing appeals procedure applies to you. If you're above ten percent, then the affordable housing appeals procedure does not apply to you. Um, but the need for affordable housing runs through all towns in Connecticut. Um, whether it be current residents who are struggling with the cost of housing and want to stay in the community they may have lived in for years. Whether it's the children who grew up there or come back from college and and finding work, et cetera. Um, so uh, I think water and sewer and transit um. Improve the quality of life and the functionality or um. The ability to create that housing. Um, but if a community does not have those things, it doesn't relieve them of, of uh, addressing this issue.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, thanks Fred, Chuck Andrews Chair. I see Marcy's got her hand up.
Yeah, it's hi Marcy. Um, I'd throw it, so first time I've actually raised my hands, I'm trying to figure, I guess I can, I can unraise it. Okay, perfect. I, I'm, was very pleased and I've been noticing that, you know, we've already been applying a number of the techniques that you had mentioned. As far as, you know, different types of housing stock and, you know, deed restricting. Um, different things and new developments, and I was happy for all that. But um, one of the things since the PLCD that's always sort of annoyed me, for lack of a better word, is. The fact that we have so much housing that could qualify. But yet it doesn't get qualified on the state level, and I was particularly intrigued when you said, you know. Using some incentives to get those units that would qualify to be deed restricted. And I was just hoping you could elaborate on what some of the techniques would be or incentives or what towns are applying that and so forth. Cause I was, I found that particularly interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Marcy, thank you. Um, so I think other communities are looking at the opportunity and expressing some frustration that. As in Branford's case, we have thousands of units which are naturally affordable, um, but they don't get counted. Um, and so uh, some have argued that, you know, they're gonna work with their legislative delegation. To see if there could be some consideration in the statute um, for uh, units which are naturally affordable. We do have the American Community Survey that keeps a pulse uh, on a more regular basis in terms of what housing prices are. So that's, that's certainly a possibility. Other communities though have uh, undertaken programs to try to um. Help in this particular effort. They offer tax incentives so that you can get a reduction of your annual taxes, not unlike elderly tax relief, for example. Um, but uh, for uh, de restricting the unit. Um, there's tax relief. Um, the town of Farmington has a program called Cooperative Ownership. Which is the, much like the CHFA program, they get involved with qualifying purchasers. The town purchases the land, the person buys the house. Which of course, if you don't have to buy the land, makes it much more affordable. The town receives rent for the land, but over time, it's much more affordable for people. Um, and that can be an approach as well. For most people, they're going to seek some type of financial compensation for a deed restriction on their unit. So it generally would involve cash or tax advantages uh, for households to participate in this program. Um, but also I think over time, from the town's perspective. Uh, we're not necessarily building new units or new developments. It could be simply de restricting the units we have. So this is an area again for exploration.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you Marcy, thank you Glenn. Just to follow up on that, I, I know we had required. Uh, as accessory dwelling units, uh, our provision required that they be deed restricted, but the legislature said you can't do that anymore. Which, I mean, is kind of interesting because on the one hand, they're saying you gotta provide affordable. And this was sort of a naturally affordable way, because a lot of times it was, you could get credit for this and uh. And most homeowners didn't care because they're actually using it for their in-laws or something. So they didn't really care about the deed restriction and they got the benefit of the accessory, and now we can't do it anymore, so. So uh, that, you know, it's interesting, but I hadn't heard that Glenn, that. Um, the tax incentive, that's something, I, I, I had the same question. How could you encourage? Cause no one's gonna voluntarily say, why should I put a deed on my property? You know, why should I restrict it? And, and I suppose there could be a tax incentive to it, and you, you mentioned that Farmington does that?
Farmington does the cooperative ownership thing, so I have some examples of different um. Programs that have been adopted by communities in Connecticut, Massachusetts. I'm just making a note to myself that. I'll forward this along to Harry and he can share this uh, with the commission and. With the Affordable Housing Steering Committee in the future to actually see the sort of the, the details of what other communities have done and are doing on this particular situation. Um, because people are getting creative, trying to figure out ways to, to wrestle um, with this uh, this challenge.
Sure. Thanks Glenn. Um, I had a few questions, but just are there other, did other members of the commission have questions?
Marcy, again, I have one more. Um, so, you know, we haven't mentioned that. There's affordable, you know, eighty percent of the, of the, I'm not sure if I'm using the right language, but. You know, they have different levels of affordable based on like eighty percent, sixty percent and so forth. You know, with towns stagger. I mean, we don't, I don't know that we do that necessarily anywhere, other than maybe something like Parkside. And I, I just didn't pick up maybe on how you're approaching that in the portable plan. You know, whether like, say, the tax incentives, if somebody were to rent, you know, say you've got a landlord. Who's got ten units, and they were to rent four of them to somebody at eighty percent. And four of them to somebody at sixty percent, could you stagger their tax break? You know, to do that. Or so, you know, I'm just brainstorming. You, I think you, I think you can follow where I'm going with the discussing.
And so we really benefited on the committee. We had great expertise on the committee, people who have been doing this for a long time. One of the people was uh, Bob uh, Eppolito, who um, has been involved with the Housing Authority. Mary Ann Amore, who's, you know, been involved in a number of efforts, Stephanie Farber from um. Years of experience uh, working in Branford in terms of these types of situations. So I, I think there are different ways that these can be combined. Um, we also recommended this affordable housing committee in the future. Because they could start to explore these types of things over time, in terms of how to do them. Depending on the percentages, Marcy, you can actually get yourself into like an eight thirty D qualifying development. Uh, which then doesn't have to comply with local zoning. Or, you know, could we figure out other ways to um, approach this particular issue? Had a conversation with somebody today that there are two ways really that a municipality might keep track of affordable housing units. Um, or affordable housing, we'll say. One of which is through counting of the units. So when earlier in the presentation, I mentioned a number of units that Branford had. And the percentage that we had, that was uh, units relative to the state. Guideline. Um, the other area, the way that the state keeps track of affordable housing is through what's called housing unit equivalent points. And this is a way that the town become eligible for four-year moratoria um, for the production of units. And I had a conversation in another municipality about, they were thinking about having an affordable housing requirement. Based on requiring the production of a certain number of housing unit equivalent points, never mind the units. Because that would incentivize units at forty percent of area median income. Um, perhaps rather than sixty or eighty. So again, towns are thinking flexibly about this in terms of how they might be able to approach this issue.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you Glenn. Uh, other members of the commission have questions? Glenn, a couple of questions. Uh, you mentioned, one of the things you mentioned is uh, who administers the affordability plan and how it's important that. You know, it, as part of eight thirty G or, or I think probably the incentive housing as well. We require that there be an affordability plan and that, uh, I think now we already require, but I'm not sure. That the administrator um, be approved by the commission. But I, you can see that the job of administering an affordable housing plan, what I envision it as. Is making sure that those who are renting the units or buying the units meet the income qualifications. And I assume that requires you gotta look at tax returns, you gotta look at income sources. It involves a lot of nitty-gritty stuff that a developer doesn't necessarily have incentive to doing. It's more paperwork for them, it's just more bureaucracy. And so you need someone who is, you know, committed to doing that and doing it right. Have you ever seen, uh, I don't, I don't know, if, if you have experience in other communities. Is, has there been a, you know, a town person appointed or, you know, maybe a housing authority person? Or is it typically up to, y- y- and I suppose that some developers, you know, that's part of what they do. If they're in the business, then they have someone specialized to do that. But how have you seen, uh, you know, how, how would you suggest, you know, getting, either reviewing the appropriate person or requesting? You know, that, that maybe someone be appointed for that or someone who's already doing it be doing? What do you, have you, you have any thoughts on that?
I do. I mean, I think um, I'm aware of situations around the state where um. The qualifications of the administrator were not well thought out. I'm familiar with one situation where the builder designated their receptionist as the administrator. And the, that person had no qualification or skills to, you know, go get into people's income qualifications, et cetera. And as a result, units get sold at inappropriate prices, it gets caught later, but the unit's already been, so now it's. It, it falls off the affordable housing appeals list. So there can be real challenges with this. Um, and really for a town planner to have the knowledge or expertise to manage this isn't always best. Um.
I, I agree.
Private contractors who do this, I think the Housing Authority could do this for, for money at the, you know, not in a. Uh, uh, you know, two hundred and fifty dollar application fee, it's something I'm familiar with. The town of Ridgefield uh, adopted a model housing affordability plan, it's on their website. And on their website, right below that is the list of approved third-party administrators. And an applicant is required to A, use the plan or, or um. Explain what modifications they want to make so that the commission is familiar with, you know, what and why. Um, and then you have to use one of the approved administrators or apply to be approved. Cause I think, as you point out Chuck, there are developers who are very good at this, very experienced with this. The developers are really, they're more interested in the market rate units than the affordables. The affordables are, are certainly the key thing. So I think what the plan recognizes, we get protocols in place. I think the state is starting to wake up to this issue a little bit as well, and so they may have uh, better procedures in the future for this. Um, and I think that's something that we should push for as well.
Thanks Glenn. Um, the plan talks about i- in the, the need for affordable housing. I assume it applies both for rental housing and for ownership housing, is that correct?
It, it, the statute doesn't really um. That's by one over the other. When we get the housing unit equivalent points, more points are given for the same unit if it's rental rather than ownership. And the challenge that I think I would like for the commission and others to be aware of is that. You know, for the last year or so, we were in a situation of historically low interest rates. Interest rates are climbing. The Fed has indicated that they plan on additional rate hikes over the course of the next year. I've started to rerun the numbers in terms of approvable sale prices at different income levels. And a one percent increase in the interest rate results in a fifteen thousand to thirty thousand dollar drop in the sale price. So the scary situation is we could have a qualifying, lower moderate income household buy a unit. And simply because interest rates went up and they went to sell, they could lose money. And it's kind of a horrible outcome. That people who want to get into the American dream, the homeownership. End up losing money or hopefully not getting foreclosed on, but it's a horrible situation. So I, I think there are improvements that need to be made. I do think the rental model works better than the ownership model. But as a society, we push the ownership, pe- people believe in the American dream. It's just the, the program and its implications years down the road. As long as interest rates were dropping, people were, you know, making money because the, the, the sale price was going up. But we're now in the reverse scenario, and it's just a little scary.
Well, one, one question about calculating the numbers, cause these are all based on calculations. And you had some data based on the naturally afferring affordable housing. How do you, I, I, I'm curious how you d- determine what the affordable housing with natural income is? Both in terms of, how do you even know what units are rented or what? I, I mean, because a lot of condos are, are rented. And, and you wouldn't necessarily, you know, would you pick that up? You know, oh, we go, we look at these rental units, they're for rent, but. A lot of ownership ones, you know, anyone can rent a house, you can rent, rent your single-family house, and a lot of them do. How i- i- is that, you know, just as a data thing? Because that's why I thought Branford, there's, I bet there's tons, we've got lots of condos, a lot of them are rented. And I, I don't know if that gets counted, I assume it does, but I don't know.
Well, there's no.
They're, they're fee ownership.
There's no perfect data source for this type of stuff, Chuck. So we end up in a situation that the Sutter's database is really good. Because they keep track, because this is the revenue producer for the town. So they keep track of sale prices and estimated value of sale prices. But apartment buildings, they look at the income stream and they don't really pay attention to, they look at the net operating income. Not the specific rental rates for the different units. Um, so it can be a challenge. And so the best information source that I have found is either the census or what's known as the American Community Survey. Because it, for all households in Branford, it, they either rent, in which case they report on the census, the gross rent they pay back. And, or they own, in which case they report their estimated um, home value. And so between those two, we can start to get a sense of the configuration of the housing market. Um, and that uh, information is on page seven of the report. Uh, it actually breaks down um, the households that are owner-occupied and renter-occupied. And what those units rent or sell for.
And that's, that's based on that source you just mentioned and.
The American Community Survey, yes.
Okay, and that's based on a survey, I assume, or just?
It's, it, so, we're, we're all familiar with the census, which is a complete report supposedly, uh, once every ten years. The American Community Survey happens on a, a more frequent basis. But it's based on a small subset of the population. So as a result, when the census comes out, we are given a number, and that is the number. No margin of error around it, that was the count. American Community Survey has an error. Because they use a survey of. Certain number of people in Connecticut, some in Branford presumably. Uh, to estimate what they believe the results are for Branford. Um, and that's the official data which is used in government and other programs. Because of the margin of error, it's not perfect, but it's the best we've got.
Okay, now I, I think it's very difficult because I, I don't know where you'd look to to say. You, you know, for, for ownership housing condos, for example, that are rented, how do you find that out? I don't know, I didn't know if you need to look at Craigslist, Facebook, I, I, who knows? The, 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 the question of, of a fee in lieu of. Um, that's one of the things you had mentioned and we had sort of done that at a couple. Uh, I think for Anchor Reef, we've got some. Uh, we, we, we did that, I think we're getting a, a chunk out of that in a little bit for Good Cell Point. These were higher density uh, developments and that was sort of a theory was. Kind of a density bonus type of theory, if you're over a certain amount, then you could either. Did restrict them, if you don't want to do that, do a fee in lieu of, and we just sort of picked, and these were PDD, so it was, it was pretty ad hoc. But it would be nice, you know, anytime you do that, you're subject to the criticism that you're being inconsistent. That you're doing one thing for one person, one for another, it would be nice to sort of. Oh, find a way to do that fairly. I mean, that, that's kind of what the, what I think of both incentive housing is doing is that. We, we give you a high amount, you know, twenty per acre if you deed restrict eighty percent. But, but I, I don't know Glenn, if you've had some experience. And, and I, I did fee in lieu of, but it could be deed restricted or how are you about? I, I mean, I agree, we, we should try to implement those. And maybe implement them in every development, but, or do you just do them in a density bonus situation? Um, I mean, I, I, I don't know if you have, th- those are the harder questions. Anytime a residential development comes in, you got to say that percentage should be affordable. Or only if it's ten units or more, or only if the, if you're seeking a density bonus higher than what's allowed as a right. Then if you want to go over that, you can do it, but we'll give you a density bonus, but you got to put some, you know, fee in lieu of or. Uh, or deed restrictions, I mean, those are the questions I think that I'm looking at. Uh, I, 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 I don't know if you have any responses or suggestions or general thoughts about those things.
Well, there's a hundred sixty nine towns around the state that are struggling with this particular issue or situation. Some communities have adopted a basic rule of thumb, which is that we're looking for onsite housing. As a baseline, we want mixed income areas and neighborhoods, we don't want one development to be exclusive. Um, and you know, push the affordable units to other places. And other communities have said, well, if we think we can get more affordable units in other places, then maybe we'll go that route. But I think it's something worthy of further discussion in Branford. Um, you may think back twenty or thirty years as we were thinking about the preservation of open space as part of subdivisions. We started off with land, then we started going to fee in lieu of land, and then we started thinking about land and other parts of the community. Um, and so, so in some ways, in terms of how we address this situation, there, there are some. Policy parallels that we might consider. Um, in terms of, you know, how can we uh, receive what we think is the maximum benefit? For the issue, let's say of affordable housing.
Sure, a- and once we do have, we, you know, the, we doing a fee in lieu of. I mean, we, we don't really have the rules as to, yeah, what, who, who does the fund, who approves the use and. We, we, we're just sort of doing it ad hoc. And I, I assume there's been some models that have done the fee in lieu of. It's kind of, I think it'd be helpful to, you know, get that process, I mean frankly, I would like planning zoning commission to have. Some say as to if that's a worthy project for that fee to be used for or something, so.
So I think that um, Darian has done quite a bit on this particular area and Darian. Um, has, has experienced some unique aspects of the eight thirty G law, so for example, if I come in with a. Twenty one unit development. And that requirement is for ten percent of the units to be affordable. Ten percent of twenty one is two point one units, well, the point one unit gets rounded up to three. Cause you have to have at least two point one.
Right.
Darian has gotten into the idea of splitting up the requirement. So maybe it's two units on site and then the point one unit is a fee in lieu of. So I actually have a regulation, I made a note here, I'll include that in the pack of materials I send to Harry. To just see what other communities have done and are doing on this. Um, and some communities, Chuck, are the issue about. Um, the forty year minimum deed restriction. Regulations are saying in those communities. Forty years or the life of the unit, whichever is longer. And other communities are discussing the concept of an automatic renewal of the forty year deed restriction at the end of it. Unless you buy out the deed restriction. With, with a payment to the housing fund. Because otherwise, somebody at the end of the forty year deed restriction has a windfall.
Correct.
So how do you, that's not a public policy benefit. You know, we. The, the, somebody's just making money and the affordable units disappearing, that, that just doesn't seem quite right. So these are all areas which are being explored in the state as a result of the requirement for these affordable housing plans.
That, that'd be great to see that. Um, I have one other export, or I had maybe a couple of technical questions, but I'll give, talk, give them to Harry and maybe we'll talk later, just know you to go through them at this one.
Certainly.
Um, Massimo, did you raise your hand, did you have a comment?
I did, but uh, you asked um, the questions about the feeling low and that's what I was gonna ask.
Sure, great, thanks. Anyone else, uh, any other commission members have questions, comments before we open up the public? Very none, let's go ahead and open it up to the public, I think Harry, you mentioned um, uh. Uh, the process for public participation is, what do you do, raise your hand? And you identify, you have to identify yourself, which I haven't been doing. Uh, when you speak, right, yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me, I can briefly go over that, um. It consists of two pieces, if you're participating through Zoom on your computer, um, there is a raise your hand. Um, function in the participant window. Um, I think uh, Miss Lisa Arpin has unveiled herself for that already, um, is waiting patiently. And. It's also in the bottom of your, there's a bar along your Zoom. Screen in the bottom there is something uh, with a little happy face reactions button. And if you click on that, you can raise your hand also as a, as a bar there, you can click to raise your hand. Um, if you're calling in through the phone, um, you will need to press star nine uh, to raise your hand. So those are two ways to do it, and if for some reason, um, you can't figure that out, you just want to do this, we'll try to recognize you also, so. Um, with that. I think the first person I saw was um, Lisa Arpin and then Jeff Clark, so I'm gonna. Ask Lisa to unmute herself. Go right ahead.
Thank you, my name is Lisa Arpin, I'm the town clerk and I'm also a resident. Glenn, thank you for your presentation. Could you kindly reiterate um, how mobile homes fit into the synergy of. Or not of affordable housing? I, I believe I heard that our situation is that. The mobile home parks are, the, the land is owned by a landowner. Um, and the mobile homes are owned by the individual owners, so. So they would not qualify, am I correct in that? Um, Glenn?
Yeah, so great question, thank you very much Lisa, so the current situation is that um. Mobile homes fall into the bucket of naturally occurring affordable housing, they rent. At prices or, or you can buy the unit and cite it in a location, which is generally naturally affordable, meets the state guidelines. But they generally don't count to the state list because they don't have a deed restriction on them. So they, they, they don't help us in that regard. However, there was a legislative change sometime in the last five or six years or so, which now included. Resident owned mobile home parks, I think it was a benefit or something to the town of Milford. Um, but the uh, economics of purchasing or acquiring the land. Um, is challenging for lower moderate income mobile homeowners. So the question is how, how. Might the town get involved to have those units count? Um, and does the town want to do that? I mean, now you get into sort of property maintenance and sort of other responsibilities, so it's a. It is naturally occurring affordable housing, um, but in most situations today does not count to the affordable housing appeals.
Okay. Yep. Um, and then the next person is uh, Jeff Clark.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, uh, my name is Jeff Clark, I live at Anchor Reef, uh, sixty Maple Street. Uh, formerly at Harbor Street, formerly at Goodson Point Road and formerly in Stony Creek and formerly in Short Beach. Um, I've written, uh, I've been a resident of Branford since nineteen forty seven, I've seen the town grow from about ten thousand to what it is now. I've studied this pretty carefully and I, I've written about three pages of single typed co- information, but I'm. Going to send that to, I'm going to email that to Harry tomorrow because I don't think anybody wants to hear it. But I'd like to just summarize a few things, I, I did complete the survey, I did sit on in one of the public workshops on Zoom. Of the Affordable Housing Committee, I would like to compliment them on their, their work, um. It's, it's uh, pretty challenging. Uh, and I would like to comment a little bit on some of the plans, what I perceive as the plan's strengths and weaknesses. The primary strength is that it puts affordable housing um, in, in our face. We really need to address uh, it, we're in a society, we're in a world now where. Uh, it appears to me as having been a real estate agent in Branford for seventeen years and looking at the inventory levels now, which are. Absolutely at the historic low in, if what I can believe is the history of Branford. Um, there's nothing for sale, there's very little to rent. Prices with inflation are going to go through the roof, so. Everything is probably going to get worse before it gets better, so we kind of have to start to address this. I, I, so I, I liked an idea that we're actually talking about it. Um, I liked very much that what's in the plan about the housing trust fund. Uh, which is basically where I believe uh, Harry, uh, not, uh, where the chairman mentioned that. Uh, the developers at Mariners Landing actually contributed or have promised to contribute. Uh, seventy seven thousand dollars into that fund. Uh, in order to bypass. Affordable housing requirements and by, to increase the density of their project by additional seventy seven units. I think basically every developer will want to pay thousand, seven, uh, pays a thousand dollars a unit or equivalent. Uh, the same way, so you should be prepared for this. Um, I'd also like to note that in page twenty, item five. Um, suggests that there be a central source of information on affordable housing, a source that can tell. Perspective tenants or buyers what is affordable and what's available. That does not exist right now in Branford, if you ask any real estate agent. Other than the things of the MLS, nobody really knows, you have to go through all the list of the buildings that are re- referenced on the. On the chart to find things and you basically can't find them. Uh, senior citizens who want one level housing or an elevated building. Uh, it's very hard to, to find those things and it's very hard to find a good source for them. So the fact that you, you could identify and have one person coordinate this stuff would be really good, wherever that lands. Um, some of the, the. Weaknesses, I think, in the plan that's been presented and I'll just note them. Um, I don't see any reference whatsoever in this plan. To the Short Beach Civic Association or the Pine Orchard Association, who control zoning in those communities. At a minimum, I think the plan should only be approved by Branford's. Planning and zoning commission if it disclaims any responsibility for those areas of town. I would further suggest that the RTM and the Board of Selectmen also consider. Uh, the plans that may be being prepared now by the Short Beach Civic Association and the Pine Orchard Association and their deliberate. Deliberations. It would be much more meaningful if the Short Beach Civic Association, Pine Orchard Association. Also participated in the creation of this plan and endorsed it, so, uh, or. Uh, with a copy of their own plan uh, for municipal approvals. Um, we are after all, one town. Um. The other problem I have is I fundamentally don't like the approach to take, the state has taken to affordable housing. Um, by the target the state has established is ten percent. Um, if you. Do the mathematics on that, it is virtually impossible for Branford to ever achieve that. Level in order to come out from under section eight dash thirty G. Um, we would need to build or have roughly thirty five hundred new units created in the town of Branford. It, it, with thirty percent of them being deed restricted or affordable in order to get to the ten percent level. So I, it's probably a mathematic impossibility that that will ever happen. Um, yes, we, the alternative to that is that we. Add additional units and get to the level where we could have a four year moratorium from the threat of eight thirty G. Um, that I think the plan correctly states would take a roughly another hundred and ninety eight. Uh, units to, to get a four year moratorium. Um, even that's a long way away, we don't, we don't have anything coming along that would anywhere near approach that, I don't think. Um, anyway. I, I. I, again, and I hope I see, I see a representative are there, I hope it's our state representative and I hope she will speak to why the state law was. Written this way because. In my view, one of the, one of the charts that I looked at for the people in need of affordable housing. Um, suggested that fifty three percent of those people were either elderly or disabled in some form. And the other forty seven percent probably were housing stressed or uh, had other reasons, probably lack of income. Um. I would suggest that Branford would be better off targeting its. Affordable housing efforts into the creation of additional senior housing and housing for the disabled. Those are folks who have no ability to do anything to improve their lot. And if our plan is broadly to, to, to the world beyond that. Um, it actually could work to the disadvantage of people who are seniors or the disabled. Because they will be competing for the same units that people who have more opportunity to improve their situation. Perhaps can work or find a new job for something like that. Um, so. I would, I would emphasize the need for senior housing and. Uh, housing for the disabled as opposed to uh, general housing for, for perhaps families. Um. I would hope that the state of Connecticut would address that by increasing. Uh, income subsidies or vouchers or child tax credits or something to people who are families who are in need of additional housing. Uh, housing that, um. Not, they don't call it section eight anymore, I guess, but those vouchers are transportable. If, if people wanted to move to Branford with one of those, they could find a place if they're lucky. Um, if the state was to liberalize its approach to uh. Providing supplemental support to people who ha- have temporary or less permanent needs. Anyway, that's my philosophical problem. Um. I, I just go back to the, one of the things that's mentioned in the survey was uh. One of the questions in the survey was, should affordable options and choices be allowed in all areas of Branford? Uh, and the answer was fif- by fifty eight percent was yes. Uh, and yet the strategies guide to the location of affordable housing doesn't mention this. Uh, it mentions the town center, which is fine and near roadways and transit routes like the train station. Again, we are one town, the plan doesn't mention Pine Orchard, Short Beach, Poisson Park, Stony Creek. And some of those areas now have water and sewer and could support higher densities. Anyway, uh, as far as deed restrictions go. I don't really, I, I noticed in the, in the document, we have two deeds on what appear to be. A single family house and a, and a mother law apartment or something like that behind it, one was on. Uh, Hotchkiss Grove Road and one was on somewhere else in town. Um, I would suggest that we shouldn't bother hassling single family homeowner. single-family homeowners who want to put a mother-in-law apartment or even turn their house into a two-family about deed restrictions. Uh, save the deed restrictions for where the project is over four units or over five units. Uh, and then, you know, if you want to offer um, uh, a buyout so they can avoid it of, you know, again, like Mariners Way, the thousand dollars a unit is a giveaway kind of price. Everybody would pay that immediately so that they would not have to encumber their house. It would provide a better alternative. Anyway, that's it. I'm gonna put all my thoughts in writing. I have a lot of suggestions of where you could put this. The gist of it is eighth, section eight thirty G is not gonna go away, no matter what we do. And to some extent, this effort isn't gonna make much headway in terms of affordable housing because eight thirty G is always going to be there. We, we can't, you can't build enough units to satisfy the affordable housing needs that the state has determined for Branford. So maybe we should embrace it and actually put in our plan where we think appropriate affordable eight thirty G housing projects could exist. Um, and there are a bunch of them in town. Actually, one of the, one of the best ones, which you guys might all laugh at, was where Amazon's going. Twenty-one acres of land and rundown condition for twenty or thirty years is big enough so you could create an entire community. Now, we didn't do that, but that's one of the types of places. The movie theater is large enough, so when it comes down, uh, you know, you could, you could have a large-scale housing project there. Anyway, that's it. I'll, I'll, I'll send my comments and and I hope if Rob and Comey's there, I don't know who that representative R is, uh, that she would speak to why the state has taken this approach and would uh, take, and take another look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Harry, anyone else? So, you see?
I'm taking another look. I'm not seeing anybody else. So just repeat that if you wanna ask any questions, you have any comments, um, you would need to wave your hands frantically or more appropriately, go down to the bottom bar and there is something called the reactions button. Click on that and there's another bar, it says raise your hand. Um, if you're on the phone, uh, you would need to press star nine uh, to raise your hand. So just looking through again, I'm actually seeing no one else doing that. Well, I see Eric is asked, so I'm gonna ask him to unmute himself.
Hi, uh, Eric Steinlof. I had one question. I was wondering if transportation costs factor into affordability in any way and if that factors into the plan?
I think that's an excellent point, but I don't like Glenn handle that.
Yeah, great question, Eric. The uh, the mathematics which the state has uh, codified into the statute does not include transportation costs. But for most households, it can be the second largest expense. Um, so it's clearly an important issue and that's one of the things we talked about in the committee was the whole concept about transit-oriented locations, which could make opportunities for people to, to not have to necessarily own a car. So near bus lines, near transit, et cetera. So uh, when we compute the math about what people can afford to pay, ha- uh, transportation cost is not built into that. Um, because it's not built into the statute. So um, I, I'm glad you brought that up because I think we, we ought to point that out in a sidebar or something in the plan. That that is an important issue, but thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, Harry, is there anyone else? Uh?
I'm Mariana Moore, so I will ask Kurt unmute.
Hi, um, everybody. Just, just a quick comment. Um, I want to uh, agree with Jeff Clark saying uh, how great it is to have this here. It's here. It's something we have to deal with. Um, and it's in our faces and I, I really am happy about that. And the other thing is I want to say what a pleasure it was to participate both in the development of this, which has a long way to go. And uh, to see the, the, to see it outline so many potentials for um, for understanding and developing uh, this approach in Branford. Um, and I look forward to what's gonna come out of it. I'm hoping very ser- very seriously that this is taken with great um, seriousness and is uh, developed and monitored and frequently reported back on to the town because it should have meaning and it's such a great start. Um, that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Mariana.
Thank you, Mariana.
Uh, Sharon R. So you should be able to speak as soon as you unmute yourself.
I, I did. Thank you. Um, I, I really appreciate the fact that this is not something that, you know, was done voluntarily uh, and spontaneously, but it is a very extensive effort to address a concern that is really quite serious here. Um, we've lived in Branford since nineteen eighty-two. Uh, we have two, two uh, children who went through the Branford School System, graduated from Branford High School. And we had, um, when they, you know, went to college, got jobs, one of them got a job here in Branford. And it was, you know, good job. And when he and his wife started having a family, they started looking for a really, you know, a family home. And they wanted to live in Branford because it's, you know, it's been close to his job and, you know, they knew what the school systems were like and that love the town. And they came to us after about two months and said, we're really sorry, but there is no way we can afford to buy a house in Branford. And I know that is happening more and more for our young people who want to stay, you know, as part of this community. But it's just not feasible for them. And this brings me to the, the, the uh, recognition that needs to be um, gained by the town, that affordable housing does not mean you are getting housing that is because you don't have money or you, you know, you're poor. It's not public housing. And that was one of the big things that came out in the survey, that most people don't really know what is affordable housing. And this is a wonderful way to try and, and, you know, get things going. You know, but people, that has to really be, we all have to be educated as to what it is. Because I think there are many people who would join in saying, this is a great idea. Um, you know, okay, it's, they're saying ten percent, but this, this is something we could all benefit from. As a town, we'd be getting, you know, many more families here, which is a vibrant way to go. Um, so I really appreciate what has been done and I do ask that with all respect, that there be a big effort made to educate all of us in town as to what affordable housing really is. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Harry, do you see anyone else?
Um, I do not. And I think I might just take this opportunity to say that, and I should have said this before, that the uh, um, the assistance of Mr. Schalder was um, um, able to be funded by a grant from the state of Connecticut. So um, that is been very helpful in making this effort move forward. So we're very happy to obtain that grant. Um, and um, personally, I think, you know, other funding would help move the whole subject and all the things I've been talking about further quicker. But I don't see anybody else who wants to speak at this point.
Great. Uh, Chuck Anderson, thank, thank you, Gary. Uh, on our agenda, we have commission discussion and comment next. I think we, we did have some questions before we went on. Uh, Glenn, you kinda went through at the end of your presentation what the timetable is and what the next steps are. Could you review that again for us?
Yep, happy to. So, um, the statutory requirement is to be adopted by June one. Um, so Harry and I, back probably January, February time, started looking through where the committee was and their work program and the commissions meeting and workload and came up with uh, these dates. Um, so after tonight, Harry and I will be working together to uh, assemble these comments, try to make some sense out of them and either come back to you uh, for your meeting on April seventh with either a list of changes for you to give us guidance on, or Harry and I may decide to just modify some pages to reflect, for example, the comments that were made about um, transportation costs. That's important to add to the sidebar. I think the uh, recognition that Short Beach and um,
Pine Orchard.
Pine Orchard, yeah. Thank you. Um, that are, are not subject to the town zoning jurisdiction. So our plan um, isn't meant to, to tell them what to do. Um, they're gonna have to sort of figure this out on their own. So we may come back to you with specific uh, comments. But our goal would be on April seventh for the commission to now authorize a public hearing on May nineteen. Um, and uh, Harry and I would get everything posted by April fourteen to meet the thirty-five day period. Uh, and then come May nineteen, uh, commission could be in a position to receive additional public comment and then uh, act on the plan if you're ready.
Great. Chuck Anderson, thank you, Glenn. Um, any uh, co- further comments by commission members? Um, that I, I see a hand raised. Is this someone, something new or something that wasn't before?
Uh, someone who spoke before, um, are you willing to entertain a comment?
Sure, sure. What's, what's up?
She'd be able to speak, Sharon. Unmute yourself and speak.
Okay, um, I, I apologize for speaking, you know, not out of turn a bit, but I think the comments just made highlight that there might be consideration given to putting a footnote or some kind of notation in this report that mentions that Pine Orchard and uh, Short Beach are not really part of this plan. And somehow, you know, should be encouraged to become part of the plan because I agree with Jeff. This is one town. And we all live here, we all pay the taxes. It should be recognition as to whether or not there are carve-outs.
Uh, Chuck Anderson, thank you. I, 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 I think that's certainly worthy of follow-up. Obviously, the survey was sent to the whole town. So I assume, you know, there are probably some comments from uh, um, people in, in Short Beach and Pine Orchard. We have this quirky, you know, thing, the Pine Orchard and Short Beach have their own zoning. So obviously, if we're talking about recommend changes to zoning regulations, you know, they'd have to do it on their own zoning regulations for fee and lieu or whatever it is. But, but you're right, they, they would have to do that. So there should be some reach out to the uh, appropriate civic associations to say, hey, are you guys either doing your own plan or do you want to jump in on this one or something? So yes, I, that's fair comment. Okay, um, a- any, uh, so, so I saw the schedule. The schedule looks, I, I, you know, I think it makes sense. Uh, we got this June first deadline and the public hearing is like May nineteenth, so, you know, that, that it's set up that way. So I think it's it's feasible, it looks good. Do, do other commission members uh, have any questions or comments? If not, I think I'm okay, uh, I, I, I think it's been a productive meeting. We've heard some comments, look forward to some of the, I know Mr. Clark's gonna send some, a lengthy email, so that'll be, we're looking at, so uh, and uh, you know, we can refine it and, and keep going.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah.
Right, that's uh, and, and Harry or Glenn, do you have any further comments?
I don't. I think again, uh, Harry and I will work effectively to get materials ready for you well in advance. And we'll come out with the agenda packet for the April tenth meeting and I'll look forward to seeing you then.
Great. That sounds excellent, Chuck Anderson's chair. So unless any other uh, commission members have any comments, I think uh, we can, we can adjourn if you're up for it, if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn. Got a, a motion?
Make a motion, adjourn the meeting.
A motion made by Fred, is there a second?
Chadwick seconds.
Yes.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All in favor? Joe Chadwick, in favor?
Chadwick in favor.
Joe Bayuzo?
Joe Bayuzo in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair's also in favor. So thank you, everyone.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.